Whenever you get ready. Are we good? All right, board. Thank you for coming a few minutes early. Just wanted to make sure you all understood what was on the agenda under the mayor. This is something that came from M and L, a little flyer I gave you, but this is somewhat of an attempt to, a little bit of relief off of debt. So, a little bit different than what we've done in the past, Dwight, where we have people go out and try to collect debt. This is something that legislature passed two years ago. We didn't act on it last year because it felt like the clerk had a lot on her at that time. We just didn't want to add something else, but now that we have another clerk, he's taking it and he'll run with it. We will need to name him tonight, Mark, in the, when we vote on that, that Josh Sutton will be the contact for this program. But this is basically going after people that would receive a, an income tax check from the state of Mississippi, and if they owe us on a bad water bill, a bad speeding ticket, or any other infraction, if they owe us a debt, the state would collect that, they would keep a little piece of it for them, for D O R, and we'd get the remainder of that, and that debt would come off of us. So, it's almost to a point where, I don't know, I asked Angela to look this morning. I don't know if we were able to look it up, but I believe we've got about three million in bad debt out there somewhere that's just been there for decades. You know, you can't, you can't write it off. It just sits there, and that's the nature of the beast. So, do y'all have any questions about what you'll be voting on tonight when we go through that? Lou, I see you raised up.
Yeah, that, from what I've read, it's 25%. And, but I also read something else, not, not from our packet of, in the research, that they add a fee to it.
Uh, Ms. Angela, can you speak to that? On top of what is collected?
So, they add a fee, and they keep the 25% plus the fee that they?
Yeah. Okay. So, do you want 75% of what you don't have now, kind of thing?
Right.
A hundred dollars or something, you know? And there is a lot of processing and time that goes into it and that kind of thing. So, at this point in time, we moved toward, there's a, Mark, and Josh had this question for you that I need to ask about a, huh? That's fine. About a hearing officer, that each one of these is individual in its nature and needs to come before a hearing officer in the city, so we're trying to go ahead and get this in so that we've got time before the end of the year, December 31st.
Do you have to do, you need to look for one here or two, or three more, and then happen to play? I think, I think I have to do, or both.
Okay. So, there are a few legal, if you would, hurdles to make sure that the taxpayer is protected to go through to get that, but if you got 2% of what we're owed off of that list, I think we'd be to the good and go forward with it. So, municipalities are picking up on this and trying to make an effort to recruit some of their losses or services rendered and citations and such. Questions?
I assume the state provides the right to add the fees to it?
It's all in there.
Okay.
It's, 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 it's.
Yes, but it is based on, and individuals, if they receive something back on their state income tax. Correct, Mr. Baker?
Can you give me, give me an example, such as, somebody owes us a hundred dollars?
Uh-huh.
And they owed, and they're going to get $200 back from the state, first example. Then, would we get the full hundred dollars, or are they going to take? I guess, I'm trying to understand the fee thing.
What if a hundred, and they have to come out and give that something back?
Okay. What if they owe us 200 and all they're getting back is 100?
It's pro rata.
It's pro, okay.
They add that 25% to the amount, but 20% is for the debt set up, 25% is the handling base of D O R.
Did you follow that? So, they add 25% to it, so a hundred dollars would turn into 125, 5% would stay with, with 5%, that would stay with D O R, and the rest of it, okay. It's not going to be a lot, but some is better than nothing. Jay?
So, we're reaching agreement to pay nothing unless we collect.
Correct. This is primarily for those people that might skip out of town on selling a utility bill, and now they live in Hernando, or South Haven, or on the coast in Biloxi, Pascagoula, or something, and, you know, it just kind of sits there, and you don't ever know if they come back through or not. It's not like you're going to put a warrant out for all of them. All right, so that's it in a nutshell. Just wanted to make sure you all knew what you were voting on before we voted on it, and we'll get started with a board meeting at six, which is, how many minutes away, Angela? Are we, five minutes away?
Seven minutes.
Okay, seven minutes. We'll get started with our board meeting.
Hi, I'm Graylin Blackshear, and I'm a senior at Brandon High School. I'm in, um, Mary's Youth Council, here to say the prayer. Okay, by your head. Thank you, Lord, for letting us all meet today in order to talk about the things that are on the agenda. Hopefully, the, all the decisions made about all of them are to, are in your honor, Lord, and just say, pray, amen.
Amen.
Hello, I'm Haley Kegel. I'm with Mary's Youth Council, and I'm a senior at Brandon. I'm here to say the pledge. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, and welcome to October 2023. Here we go. All right, so, I've got a friend here. Commissioner, we're going to let you talk and public comment, and I read a letter. Go ahead, come on up to my phone. I'm going to give you, you can say whatever you'd like to say, but I let the board know last time how you had helped us on this MPO project we got out here on Highway 80. It's the Woodgate Signal and Stone Gate, and those are, you know, with costs going up like they have, your help was instrumental in getting that bid and done, so we appreciate that. So, please.
Well, Mayor Lee and two members of the council, let me say how appreciative I am to just have an opportunity to come to your great city and say a few words to you. Uh, I'm so proud of the city of Brandon and all that you are doing. Uh, you're one of the, I'm going to say fastest growing cities and communities here in this area, and we have many, and we have to try and figure out how to work together and collaborate with you. You have a great leader in Mayor Lee, and I certainly have enjoyed working with him in trying to do things for the city of Brandon, but he has such a long list. Uh, he had me over here along with many of the staff person, all of our engineers who work in this district, and he invited us in the way of a friendly conversation to just talk about a project. And we came in, and he had a map, and all of the projects that you have been working on and that you have secured and that you plan to, to work on, and he assigned all of those to me. And as a, hey, you know, I have a limitation as to what we can do, but in him, I find a, a great relationship and enjoy working with him in that capacity. But your plans look good to me, and there are many things that we can do from the part of transportation through infrastructure and helping you to develop that. And we're going to be working with the mayor and you to help do that. This was just such a small project, and yet a big project, because when you get into the middle of the year, as we are in, and you have committed dollars, as you all well know, uh, it can be very challenging trying to find additional dollars. And the mayor called up and say, we need an additional one million plus dollars, and that's where are you going to get it from, man? He said, from you and whatever else we can do. So, we looked at what we had left over, and $300,000, uh, we found that we could make available to you, uh, on this project. It's such a great project, uh, when you look at what you're going to be doing with that intersection and the like, uh, it's going to be a safety issue. It is a safety issue, and it's going to bring additional safety to your community and be able to move the traffic better. So, we were very pleased to be able to give you the additional $300,000. I know that based upon Mayor Lee and the way he works, it's simply a down payment on something else that he won't, and we look forward to your coming back and getting and requesting additional money so that we can help you work through the process of doing all of the projects that you have, and I mean that literally, that you do have a lot of good projects, but they are needed in order to be able to move traffic through your community in a safe way, while at the same time, growing the community and developing your economic development area, uh, here in the Jackson Metro area, Brandon, Mississippi. So, I look forward to coming back and making some of your shows that won't be canceled because the mayor is out of town. But I do look forward to coming back and being with you. Be glad to entertain a question, Mayor, if you have some.
Commissioner, I want to let you know too, board and audience, that MDOT actually helped us. It is. Can you hear me all right, Angela, in the back? That, uh, MDOT helped us with a signal at, uh, what I call Cross Gates Boulevard and Highway 80. So, these two projects that you helped us out with, that $300,000, in conjunction with that one, to complete East Metro, then we'll connect, uh, Exit 54, I-20 out here, all the way up to 25, and we hope to do a ribbon cutting on that later this month and hope to get you back for that. Uh, it's a big moment for Brandon and everybody because it creates a north-south corridor that we've long needed in this county, and then we'll keep working toward moving south from there, over the railroad track and down Highway 18. So, I just want to come shake your hand and say thank you, if that's all right.
Yes, sir.
Because I know Ms. Lee over here wants to get a picture of that.
Please do.
And I've told her, us Lee's got to stick together. There ain't enough of us in the world.
I have with me my staff. Um, Ms. Lee is, is working with us as consultant. Uh, we have, uh, the young lady over there who takes care of me and makes sure that we get where we need to be, uh, Ms. William Keller, and then Sir, John Rucker, uh, from Yazzle, who is our assistant also. Mayor, it's a pleasure.
Thank you, Mayor. Take up a handful.
We, we color-coded it up here.
Does anyone else here at this time like to make public comment before the board? Mr. Johnny Baker?
We're good. Now, I'll be brief. Uh, can everybody hear me? Okay. Um, the Brandon Main Street Association held our first wind-down downtown event earlier in September, went off a smashing success. I think it took about three or four days to sell all the tickets out. We're going to double the sales of that for the October event. We just want to invite everybody to come out to this. It's not just for women. We had some guys out there, too, and we've got some plans to try to broaden that a little bit to include some more of the males out there, uh, and try to figure out a way to include some kids as well. So, that's going to be coming on October the 26th, okay? That's the same night. I think we've got a farmer's market going on. You'll have Boo 042 going on, and I think the vault has an event at her, uh, venue that night as well. So, we're trying to tie all that together and just have a big family event downtown on October the 26th, okay? Um, a big thank you to the city council for what you do, for the local businesses that participated in that, and then also all of the residents that came out. That was the first time, and anytime we hear about wine, we think, oh, Lord, here it goes, you know, but everybody was very civil. There was a 72-year-old lady, when I was cleaning up afterwards, and she said, this has been long overdue. Not the fact that it was wine, but just more things congregating residents together so you get to meet people. Um, I didn't know you could fit that many people into Myrick Downtown down there, and it was very good to see. We've got a, a very good gym down there. Uh, so, if you've not gotten an opportunity, I'll tell you, come on out October 26th. She'll be in there. Very good people that are invested in Brandon. So, again, thank you for that. One other plug I do want to put in for the Main Street Association, you're going to see on October the 21st, we're going to have what you've been maybe hearing about, an Oktoberfest. This is not a big jazz fest or something like the St. Patty's Day Parade in Jackson. This is just going to be our first year of actually holding this in Brandon at the four restaurants downtown that we've got down there, and each one of those will serve kind of as a garden, um, a smaller scale event for this first year to figure out how all this goes. Um, the, the restaurants are bought in on this. We're going to have some entertainment in each one of the locations. We've got a kid's zone. We've got a lot of sponsors already on board for this, and we're just trying to find a way, how do you Brandonize this? How do we customize this for families? So, this isn't a bunch of 20 to 30-year-olds, um, going out there having this fest. So, we just want to invite you to, again, be looking at the Brandon Main Street Association Facebook page. Come out and join us on the 21st, a Saturday, when State and Ole Miss are out of town. We're going to have the games on. We're going to have a movie for the families, uh, later that night, so check us out on our Facebook page, and again, thanks for all that you do.
Yeah, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Yes, sir, Commissioner?
May I apologize, uh, having served with former Reverend Baker, and who is a good friend, and he knows you don't come in a meeting like this and not introduce the person who counts the money and make it all happen. The person who wrote our FPA project, uh, for the Department of Transportation, Lee Parker, he's the one who makes sure we find the money to give to you, to me.
Commissioner, I want to tell you too, Lee and I go back and forth all the time. I got him on my phone, and he always returns calls, even on a five, after five o'clock on a Friday, he'll return my call, and I want to give you positive feedback on that, and I'm sure he's not treating me just that way. It's everybody he's got contact with, so he needs a raise.
I respect that.
Well, I mean, he's a good employee. Thank you for coming. All right. Anyone else this evening would like to make public comment before the board? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on through the agenda. Old business, most to approve the regular board meeting minutes of September 18th, 2023. Old business, motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of September 18th, 2023. Motion by Mr. Sharon Womack. Second by Mr. Luke Coker. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Board. Under the mayor, consideration to adopt a resolution authorizing Municipal Intercept Company LLC to submit debts to the Mississippi Department of Revenue as authorized by the Local Government Debt Collection Setoff Act and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement to collect the municipal debt. And we want to assign Assistant Clerk Josh Sutton to that. I believe that has to be formal as the appointee. That's correct. We handle that correctly, Ms. Angela? Okay. All right, any questions on that, Board? And the audience, we did cover this in a very short work session before we got started. Is there a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Motion by Mr. Sharon Womack, second by Mr. Chris Vincent. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Board. Ms. Angela.
May I take all of these items together?
Yes, ma'am. If you'll take them very slowly, please. That's in case we need to back up.
Okay. The first item is consideration to approve the quote from Nixon. It was formerly RP Power LLC in the amount of $22,470 for a professional services generator maintenance agreement and authorize the mayor to execute. Number two, consideration to approve professional services agreement with used cloud for phone services for a period of three years and authorize the mayor to execute our related documents. Number three, authorize payment in the amount of $10,638 for logic software. It's our annual maintenance and support. Number four, request permission to deposit excess funds from the meter account in the amount of $1 million into the Trustmark Investment Account. Number five, consideration to adopt an ordinance setting the salary of the mayor at $115,000 per year and authorize Mayor Pro Tim Lou Coker to execute the same. Number six, consideration to approve salary realignment effective October 16th in accordance with the memo. Number seven, consideration to accept the municipal compliance questionnaire for FY 2023. Number eight, consideration to approve the fiscal year 2023 budget amendments and authorize publication of the same. Number nine, consideration to approve the docket of claims for October 2nd. Fox Everett claims released on September 21, and they like electronic fund transfers for September.
All right, thank you, Ms. Angela. Mr. Baker has a question on four.
Number four, are you asking, I just want to be clear, are you asking to move 1 million into that account? Or everything? So what about when more excess is built back up? Are you asking for perpetual permission or just this one time?
Just this one time. If it builds back up, then I'll come back and ask again.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve those nine items? Motion by Mr. Jared Crane. Second by Mr. Chris Vincent. Any question on those? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Thank you, Ms. Angela. Thank you, Board.
Good evening.
Hello, Ms. Carly.
I have three items. Can I take them together, please?
Please.
Number one, consideration to approve a professional service agreement for the purpose of promoting tourism in accordance with House Bill 1521, authorize the mayor to execute the same and approve the authorize all related show expenditures. Live Nation for the Outlaw Music Festival on October 13th, 2023. Number two, request permission to hire Selena Lovejoy as a part-time amphitheater runner effective 10/3/2023 and set rate of pay in accordance with the memo. Number three, consideration to rent equipment for the setup of Magic Lights from United Rentals with pricing as provided under state contract in accordance with the memo.
Thank you. And the audience, the Magic Lights, they've already selling tickets. Last I got, Ms. Angela was prior, was 172 today when they opened up, and they started sitting. They started already selling tickets, right? Which that show should run November 17th. That's a Friday. That's the Friday before Thanksgiving through New Year's Eve. Boy. All right. Is there a motion to approve those three items? Motion by Mr. David Ferris.
I have a question.
Second by Mr. Luke Coker. Mr. Williamson has a question.
Yeah. Carly, is this number three, is that in line with what we rented last year budget-wise? Are we adding to it or what's?
I'm gonna ask Angela Prior to come up here and answer those questions.
It's the same equipment we rented last year, but what I went ahead and did is reserved it for the whole time so that we have it like on hold, but we won't use it all of that time. But then that way, if like a storm comes through and we need emergency, you know, to get a lift or something out, we kinda have it on reserve. So does that make sense?
How much did that change the budget from last year to this year?
It won't change it any because we'll send it back when we're done with it. But it just kinda holds it on reserve. So we'll use, we'll use the rental equipment from October 3rd till November 17th. So the quote you're looking at shows us for October 3rd through January 15th. But it's a reservation.
So it's not any more money than?
No, none at all, no.
Okay. Mayor, would it be possible to get a budget for what this is gonna cost us this year?
Sure.
Okay. I'd like to see a budget of what it's costing us as opposed to last year.
Okay. Yeah, it's the same thing. It's just a kinda, y'all are looking at the rental reservation.
Okay.
Absolutely. We'll track every dollar all the way through it, just like we did last year, and give you a report when we get to the end of it too, to make sure we're accurate. Okay? All right, we got a motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Ms. Carly.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'd like to take all these items at once, please.
Okay.
Item number one, consideration to amend action item 7.11 from February 21st, which authorized the purchase and installation of two 75-horsepower pumps from Fluid Services to reflect a declaration of emergency due to the then-present conditions and to further extend such declaration of emergency and authorize payment in the amount of $42,550 from Harvey Services, Inc. for the purchase and installation of a control panel for Country Meadows Lift Station. Number two, consideration to approve Jerry Taylor to attend the Mississippi Rural Water Association Wastewater Collection System Certification Training to be held in Biloxi, Mississippi on October 15th through October 20th and authorize payment of travel expenses. Number three, consideration to approve the quote from Jeffcoat Fence Company, Inc. in the amount of $23,236 as the lowest and best quote received for the replacement, expansion, and upgrade of the fence and gates at Crosswell, at Chamberwell 103 Service Drive. Number four, consideration to approve the quote from Pocket Power Systems in the amount of $8,279.35 as the lowest and best quote received for the repairs to the Apple Ridge Lift Station Generator. Number five, consideration to advertise for bid the Shallow Park Bank Stabilization Project. Number six, consideration to approve utility adjustment approvals and denials as recommended by the Public Works Department. And number seven, consideration to authorize advisement for bids for the FY 24 paving project.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Board, is there a motion to approve those seven items? Motion by Mr. Chris Vincent. Second by Mr. Jared Crane. Any question on those, any of those? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just got one. Consideration to approve the release of letters of credit for phases one and two of Longleaf Subdivision in accordance with the memo.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve that request, Board? Mr. Dwight Middleton, say a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chris Vincent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thanks, Sam.
How many phases are there to that subdivision?
Two.
Two, so that's it?
Mm-hmm.
All right, Chief.
Afternoon, Mayor.
Good evening.
Got five items tonight. Can I take them all at once?
Yes, sir.
Request permission to re-advertise for public sale the surplus of firearms. Item number two, request permission to hire Joseph Latham as police officer training effective October 2nd, 2023 and set rate of pay in accordance with the memo. Item number three, request to increase rate of pay of Officer John Boyd in accordance with the memo due to educational benchmark being met. Item number four, request permission to remove a Remington Model 870 shotgun from the police department inventory. Item number five, accept the resignation of Communications Officer Valora Lewis effective October 11th, 2023.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to approve those five items, Board? Motion by Mr. Luke Coker, second by Mr. Jared Crane. Any question on any of those? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And we are going into executive session, so we'll swear in, do the swear-in right here before we leave, okay? Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
You got some business to take care of tonight?
I do.
You wanna take care of that before you get started, or you wanna do these items first?
I'd go through the items first, get that out of the way.
That's good, yes, sir.
If you want to, we can go ahead and book the executive session, then do it. If you agree with that?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna start off with my monthly report. We had all two souvenirs function properly today. The one at Pleasant Street and the one at Co-op is the one that did not function properly. And we have Marcus, I already contacted him, so he's come to look at them, figure out what the issues are. Our EMS report, we had 183 Priority One calls with the average response time of nine minutes and 32 seconds. I want to take the rest, the other items together, sir?
Yes, sir.
Item number two, accept the resignation of firefighter Dallin Owens as a full-time firefighter and remain as a volunteer reserve firefighter. Item number three, request salary increase for passing EMT events for Lieutenant Allen and Weston Stewart. Item number four, request permission to hire Jacob Hutz as a professional firefighter and set the rate paid per memo. Excuse me. Request permission to adjust the hourly rate pay for part-time firefighters in accordance with the memo.
All right.
That's all the items, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Is there a motion to approve items two through five? Motion by Mr. Sharon Womack. Second by Mr. David Ferris. Any question on those? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Chief, I got one more question for you related to Pafford EMS. I've been asked by a couple of people. I know I touched base with Greg about a signup program where you could sign up for ambulance service at your house as a membership-type program. I understand Pafford has one.
Yes, sir, they do.
But we've never really promoted it in Brown, or do we in Brown know about that?
I think they promoted it a little bit when they first kinda came in the area after they established in Ranford County. And I think it's just, they never really promoted it after that very much. The marketing, I don't know why they didn't market it more.
And I wish, I've had a couple of requests for that. So I wish we would run that to Brown and see if that's something we can.
I definitely can. We'll do that and I share it on our city Facebook page and everything else.
Revisit it. Well, it was, it was early on when they were just in Brandon. It was part of the conversation, but I believe, I believe it offsets the cost of Medicare pretty strongly for our transport.
It sure does.
And I think a lot of families would really be, we need to focus in on that and communicate that better to people. And so let's get the nuts and bolts of that and try to get it to the next board meeting.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. We definitely can do that.
See if Greg's around. Maybe he can come visit with the board.
I'd love to.
Good to see his face in here.
Yeah.
All right. You got something else you need to take care of?
Yes, sir, I do. If y'all have just a minute. I'd like to present a plaque and honor and honor a man that for 25 years of service has been a good friend of mine and very loyal to the city of Brandon, the Brandon Fire Department.
Deputy Chief Patrick Wolf, if you mind, coming up.
25 years of long feet in this job, especially around here in Brandon. So we're here to, I want to honor you, Patrick. Thank you for being a good friend to me.
You're peeing in there?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Don't lose it.
Put the bag in your pocket. Get rid of the bag. There we go.
Thank you all.
Thank you. No, thank you. Send you, send you go from A to Z, haven't, all the way across the rainbow. All right, boy, I'd like to entertain a motion to retire to determine the necessity of being in executive session. Motion by Mr. Sharon Womack. Second by Mr. Luke. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Before we do, we've got Mr. Latham back there. If you would come down to the front, please.
All right, we are out of executive session.
Mr. Mayor, there were two votes in executive session regarding personnel matters.
All right, thank you very much, entertain a motion to adjourn for the night. Appreciate your time this evening, is there a motion?
To move.
Motion by Mr. Harry Williams, second by Mr. Lou Coker, all in favor say aye.